To the Mobile City Planning Commission meeting for June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, I would like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. This divided, this meeting is divided into two sessions, public hearing and, excuse me, deliberation. In the public hearing session, we will have the agenda item called, the applicant makes their presentation, commission members ask questions if any, and members of the public make their comments to the commission. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and four people against an item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. At one minute, you will hear a warning bell or a beep prompting you to please summarize your comments. And after opposition speakers, an applicant will be allowed a two-minute rebuttal. If you do intend to speak, come to the podium at the bottom of the stairs, speak into the microphone and provide your name and address for the record. Direct all your comments to the commission only and not to the applicant, the staff, or the audience. After hearing all the applications, the commission will then go into deliberation where we will discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary but with no input from the audience. Commissioners then vote on each application and the results of that can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise during deliberation that were not addressed in the public hearing, we have the discretion to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, a commissioner may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. That doesn't mean they are indirectly involved with the applicant or the application, but depending on the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead. This is a reminder that the Planning Commission makes final decisions on subdivisions with appeals of these decisions to the Circuit Court. The Planning Commission is strictly a recommending body for the rezonings, conditional use permits, and planned developments. The city council makes the final decision on these applications and all appeals of city council decisions are to the Circuit Court. At this time, please turn your cell phones or other electronic devices to silent or vibrate. If you do need to take a call, please step outside. Commissioners and staff, please turn on your microphones when speaking. I'll call the roll, myself, Jay Stubbs, present, Mr. Kirk Matei, Ms. Jennifer Denson, Ms. Shirley Sessions, Mr. Larry Dorsey, Mr. Chad Anderson, Mr. Matt Anderson, Mr. Nick Amberger, Mr. Josh Woods,
Here.
Mr. Harry Brizlin, Mr. Kenny Nichols. We do have a quorum and I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for today. Properly moved and seconded, all in favor? The agenda passes. I will instruct the, the audience and there are twenty-one items on this agenda. Please be patient as we work through these, we will move as quickly as we can. Number one on the agenda is a holdover of subdivision at Griffin Place subdivision. This is, got eight conditions listed. Is the applicant present? Yes, sir?
Hello.
Yeah, name and address for the-
John Griffin. For, we're here to try to see what we can do for fifteen eighty-two Leroy Stevens Road. We've subdivided the property into Griffin Place subdivision, I believe, has lot one, lot two, lot three, and we believe what we've been able to do with a flag lot for lot two and then a, the addition of a seven-foot easement on the north side of fifteen eighty-two Leroy Stevens, that we've got agreement from our neighbor and her mortgage company to proceed with the easement. So we think we've been able to kind of satisfy what we were asked to do.
All right, Mr. Griffin, there are eight conditions listed. I'm assuming that you've read through those conditions and are in agreement with them?
Yes, sir.
And there's nothing to discuss on those conditions?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll see if any commissioners have any questions and then we'll ask the audience if anyone's here in support or against it. Any commissioners have questions for Mr. Griffin? No, I did not, not yet. All right, I'll ask now if there's anyone else in the audience that is here for this agenda item? Is there one here to speak against this agenda item at fifteen eighty-two Leroy Stevens Road? All right, seeing none, Mr. Griffin, as long as you're in agreement with those eight listed conditions, we can have a seat and we'll move on.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Number two on the agenda is a dual-application holdover subdivision and a rezone fifty-six thirty-two and fifty-five seventy-two Commerce Boulevard West, the Mobile Commerce Park subdivision, phase one, re-subdivision of lots sixteen and seventeen. Is the applicant present? Yes, sir. For the subdivision, there are nine conditions listed and for commissioners, there are seven findings of fact for consideration. Go ahead.
Yeah, Charles Tisher with Clark Gear Latham and Associates, three nine zero one Spring Hill Avenue. The applicant, Ritesh Gupta, would like to just withdraw the application.
Understood. The applicant is requesting withdrawal. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If anyone here was, was in the audience for number two, that application is requesting withdrawal. We'll move on to new agenda items. Number three, this is a subdivision, thirty-one hundred Old Shell Road, subdivision of one lot, right at a quarter of an acre. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
All right, there's eight conditions listed for this subdivision. Go ahead.
Wesley Boppers, P.O., Box three fifty Jackson, Alabama. This is a subdivision required by permitting, one lot. The applicant, or the owner, has awarded a H.R.A. grant or house, and this is just the requirement we're required to go through to get permission.
All right, so I'm assuming that you and the applicant are in agreement with the eight listed conditions? That's the applicant?
Yes.
Just wanted, give me a, give me a thumbs up or yes, you're in agreement with the eight listed conditions? All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Wes. Is there anyone else here for this agenda item at thirty-one hundred Old Shell Road? Is there anyone here to speak against this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we can move on to number four, a subdivision at sixty-four sixty-seven Tillery Drive. This is a subdivision of one lot at, right at a third of an acre. Is the applicant present? And as you come down, there are nine listed conditions. I'll ask if you're in agreement with those unless you have questions about any of them.
No, no questions. This is for the home recovery Alabama program.
All right, so name and address for the record.
Melissa Burnett, seventy-two seventy-six Cuss Fork Road.
All right, so you're all good with the nine conditions listed? Is there anyone else in the audience here for agenda item number four to speak for it at sixty-four sixty-seven Tillery Drive? To speak for it or against it? For it? Would you like to speak or would you just want to give me the thumbs up? Is there anyone else in the audience to speak against this agenda item at sixty-four sixty-seven Tillery Drive? All right, seeing none, thank you so much.
Your friend.
We'll move on. Agenda item number five, subdivision at ten sixty-five Choctaw Street, subdivision of one lot, right at a fifth of an acre. Is the applicant present? That's you. There are eight listed conditions. I'll ask if you are in agreement with those eight listed conditions?
Yes.
The applicant is present and in agreement. I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience that is here for ten sixty-five Choctaw Street in support of that? Is there anyone here in the audience in opposition to it? Hey, I, I thought that gentleman was coming down, sorry. I don't see anyone in the audience in opposition. Thanks so much on that. Agenda item five, we'll move on. Number six, this is a subdivision at eighteen-ten Blackman Street, the Duke's first addition to Tolmanville subdivision, a re-subdivision of lot eleven and north twenty-one feet of lot thirteen. This is one lot, right at a fifth of an acre. Is the applicant present? I do not, oh, we have a hand raised, thanks. Are you in agreement with the five listed conditions? Applicant is present and in agreement with the five listed conditions. Is there one, any, in the audience that is here to speak for this agenda item at eighteen-ten Blackman Street? Is there one here in opposition to it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number seven. This is a subdivision at twenty-sixty-seven Clinton Street, Coleman Place subdivision of one lot at point one-two acres. Is the applicant present? Yes, sir. There are eight listed conditions here for this Clinton Street subdivision.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I got a letter here also about, that's my neighbor. You about, about the house, I don't know.
Are you the neighbor?
Yes.
Hang on a second.
So I'll first ask you as the applicant, do you have any issue with the eight listed conditions?
Do not.
No issues with the listed conditions. I'll now ask if anyone in the audience is here in favor of twenty-sixty-seven Clinton Street subdivision? Is anyone here in opposition or have questions regarding it?
I, I have questions on Montez Moore, the neighbor. I gotta, I don't know why I got a letter.
All right, speak your name and, your name and address for the record and then we'll explain that.
Okay, my name is Montez Moore, twenty-sixty-five Clinton Street. I don't know if this is what is called a easement or something, what's it called when the land, I guess it's about easements and air rights.
So this is a subdivision-
Beats and bounds, something like that.
What was the question?
I don't know what, I don't know what this in regards to, is this about a property land demarcation or?
So this, this is about the sub, this is about the-
I have no idea.
This is just the property they own, they're required to put that into a subdivision, the property they already own, in order to get a program, that's all this is for.
Okay. This has nothing to do with any other properties around, you were just notified because you are within a certain distance of the subdivision application address.
Okay.
Thank you for coming, though. I'll ask if there's anyone else here in opposition?
Nice to meet you.
All right, twenty-sixty-seven Clinton Street, I think we've addressed that. Number eight on the agenda, this is subdivision at four sixty-three Mobile Street, Weems addition to the Millville subdivision, one lot at point nine acres. Applicant, go ahead, name and address for the record.
Ryan Compton, seven-two-seven-six Cuss Fork Road.
All right, Mr. Compton, there's eleven listed conditions. Are you in agreement with those eleven listed conditions?
Yes, sir.
Applicant is present and in agreement. Any questions about anything? All right, I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience that is here in favor of four sixty-three Mobile Street subdivision? Is there one here in opposition to it? All right, Mr. Compton, thank you so much. We'll move on to number nine on the agenda. This is a subdivision at twenty-seven-ten Thompson Drive South, Green Heights subdivision of one lot, just over a fourth of an acre, not a fourth, point four-three acres. Is applicant at the podium, there are seven listed conditions for the Thompson Drive subdivision. You're in agreement with those seven?
Yes, sir.
Applicant is present and in agreement with those listed conditions. Is there anyone else in the audience here to speak in favor of this subdivision at twenty-seven-ten Thompson Drive South? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number ten on the agenda. Next time, we'll figure out if they're next to each other, we can put them next to each other, that's kind of fun. Twenty-four-twelve Wolf Ridge Road, Thomas Addition subdivision of one lot over a, right at a third of an acre, eight listed conditions. Yes, sir? Mr. Compton?
Yes.
You're in agreement with the eight listed conditions?
Correct, yes.
All right, applicant is present and in agreement of the eight listed conditions. Is there anyone else in the audience that is here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone to speak in opposition? Twenty-four-twelve Wolf Ridge Road. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Number eleven, subdivision at twelve fifty-two Adams Street, this is the Ellis Heights subdivision, one lot at point one-one acres, eight listed conditions, same questions apply, you're in agreement?
Yes, sir.
Applicant is present and in agreement with the eight listed conditions. Is there anyone else in the audience to speak in favor of this at twelve fifty-two Adams Street?
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder that we had one comment on this application.
All right, I'll instruct the commissioners to check their notes under this agenda item number eleven at twelve fifty-two Adams. Now I'll ask if anybody's here to speak in opposition to this subdivision at twelve fifty-two Adams.
I have questions.
All right, come on down to the podium, state your name and your address, once again for the record and ask your question.
My name is Montez Moore, at twenty-sixty-five Clinton Street. I'm concerned about my newfound neighbor. He is pursuing property as if he isn't happy about something. I'm just concerned, because I saw that in the Constitution, it's not in there anymore. Pursuing property was updated to happiness. I ain't never had an annotation or note or anything in it. I just noticed that. I was letting you know, I, 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 I like your patriotism.
All right.
That was a compliment.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll ask if there's anybody else that has any opposition to this agenda item at twelve fifty-two Adams. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number twelve. This is eight twelve Wellington Street, the Bryant Addition subdivision, one lot, right at a third of an acre, nine listed conditions. Mr. Compton, same question?
In agreement, yes.
Applicant is present and in agreement. I'll ask if anybody's here in favor of eight twelve Wellington Street? Anyone here in opposition to it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number thirteen on the sub, on the agenda. We have a recusal, Mr. Kenny Nichols. We still have a quorum for this agenda item. This is a subdivision at forty-one twenty-five, forty-one thirty-seven, forty-one fifty-one, and forty-two oh-three Moffett Road, the Moffett Wolf Ridge subdivision of one lot at five and a half acres. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the nine listed conditions? Applicant is present and in agreement with the nine listed conditions. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone here to speak in opposition to it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number fourteen on the agenda. Seventy-six fifty Old Mil-, we can welcome Mr. Nichols back. Seventy-six fifty Old Military Row, the Madison Family subdivision, two lots at point four-three acres. Is the applicant present? Applicant is present, there's eight listed conditions, you're in agreement? Applicant is present and in agreement with the eight listed conditions. Is there anyone here in favor of seventy-six fifty Old Military Road? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number fifteen, a subdivision at thirty-two fifty-four Old Carline Street, the Engate Place subdivision, a re-subdivision of lot eleven and parts of lots nine and ten. This is a subdivision of those two lots at just over a third of an acre. I'm assuming this is the applicant coming down? Great, there are eight listed conditions here. Just let me know if you have any questions or if you're in agreement.
Alan Andrews.
Pull them, name and address for your record and pull the microphone up just a little bit, please, sir.
Alan Andrews, thirty-two fifty-four Old Carline Street, and we have no issues with the-
All right, Mr. Andrews, the applicant is present and in agreement with the eight listed conditions. I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience in favor of thirty-two fifty-four Old Carline Street? We have a question from the audience. The listed conditions are for the applicant and they're also posted on the website on the agenda. It's simply a retention of their rights of way along the streets of Engate and Old Carline, a revision of the final plat, which is the city map, to correctly label it, a retention of the lot sizes for their square feet and acreage, and a provision of those measurements on the final plat, a retention of at least five-foot front yard setback along Carline Street and Engate Street as required by our code, compliance with all engineering, placement of a note on the final plat with all traffic and then traffic engineering comments, compliance with urban forestry, and compliance with the fire department. So as long as they are in good standing with those eight conditions, then those are what they have agreed to. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone here in opposition? All right, seeing none, thank you, sir. Mr. Andrews, we'll move on to number sixteen. Fifty-five seventy-five Commerce Boulevard East, the Mobile Commerce Park subdivision, a re-subdivision of lots two into lots two A and two B. Those two lots are six-point-eight acres. Nine conditions listed on this subdivision. Yes, sir?
Patton-Hahn nineteen oh-one Sixth Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama. Yes, the applicant is, agrees to those conditions.
The applicant and their representative are in agreement to the nine listed conditions. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this subdivision application at fifty-five seventy-five Commerce Boulevard East? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Seeing none, we'll move on, thank you, sir. Number seventeen, subdivision thirty-two fifty-four Valley Road and twenty-seven fifty-nine Dogwood Court, the C.L. Anderson subdivision, two lots at just over half an acre. Yes, sir, ten listed conditions, same question applies.
Yes, sir.
All good?
All good.
The applicant is present and in agreement with the ten listed conditions. Is there anyone else in the audience in favor of this subdivision application? Thirty-two fifty-four Valley Road and twenty-seven fifty-nine Dogwood Court? Anyone here to speak in opposition to it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number eighteen on the agenda. This is fifteen sixty-five Phillips Lane, Milton T. subdivision, re-subdivision of lot eleven. This is four lots subdivision at, right at three-quarters of an acre. Is the applicant present? The applicant is present by raising of hand. Are you in agreement with the eight listed conditions? The applicant's nodding, yes, he is. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of fifteen sixty-five Phillips Lane? Anyone here to speak in opposition to it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Number nineteen, change of pace, we have a lot of numbers here. Nineteen subdivision, this is seventy-seven oh-one, seventy-seven oh-five, seventy-seven oh-nine, seventy-six twenty-one, and seventy-six thirty-one Old Government Street Road, the Village at Tate Farms, subdivision of two-hundred-and-twenty-two lots, seventeen acres. There are fifteen listed conditions. Go, Red.
Yep, Brett Orrell with Poly Surveying. Just want to look at two items, item number two, probably a comment more for city engineering, and item ten, probably start with ten, be the easiest. Just wanted to see if there's, I know there's a note around the setback, I think we proposed fifteen feet due to the townhome configuration, and just want to see if this, if the Planning Commission has the ability to waive that requirement versus going to the Board of Adjustment, just kind of skip that formality if we can take care of that at this body. So just would ask that that be reduced to matched existing plat at fifteen feet versus twenty-five due to the configuration. On item two, this is a unique development in which, and we did take the time, we met with the city, city departments and, and legal as well, we came up with a configuration here with, with multiple access points, and it's more of a traditional, which you would see in downtown or, you know, out in Westmobile or, you know, Pinehurst, you know, more lot and block, and the dedication of a twenty-five-foot radius really kind of hinders and kind of puts a burden on the placement of the existing plan for the townhomes. So I was going to ask that that comment be stricken to allow us to work with city engineering to ensure that we have, you know, proper utility placement, roadway placement, connectivity. Of course, we're going to have sidewalks throughout the subdivision itself. In the event that we need a corner radius for sidewalks or something to that effect, what I think would be appropriate would be to simply, at the time of final plating, as we're doing as-bilts for the city to review, we could put in pedestrian easements, things of that nature, we'll also could put in a utility easement should there be a conflict there, but really just didn't want to impose on, you know, the building itself. A twenty-five-foot radius is, is pretty extreme for when you have a fifteen-foot setback, so it could, could create putting us closer to that existing right-of-way. So just asking if there's some relief there to waive or remove item two or modify in some capacity.
All right, Mr. Orrell, we'll take them in the order you brought them up and I'll defer to staff. I guess we would be going back to the original code on the fifteen-foot there as opposed to the twenty-five-foot front yard setback?
On that, because I believe they also want zero on the sides, correct?
Yes, we would have to because of the-
Right. It's gotta all go to the board, however, like we discussed, rather than there being two-hundred-and-twenty-two applications, it would go to the board as one plan-
Okay.
-for front and side setbacks.
No problem.
Good on number ten.
Yes.
Go to number two, and I will defer to staff and also send engineering, Mr. Amberger's here with revision or to, to remove that.
Staff would be agreeable to coordination with city staff for, regarding the corner radio as needed.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, there's no problem with that. I would say, you know, where it becomes a struggle downtown, when the downtown streets were built, there wasn't as many utilities as there are today.
Sure.
So you may have to look at where some of your utilities are coming in perhaps along the, the back lots instead of the front, because we're just unfortunate when you, when you shrink the right-of-way, when you tighten up the geometry, there's just nowhere for things to exist that are supposed to be on public right-of-way and not private right-of-way, but we're happy to work with you.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think, I think more than likely, once we have the, the full design by the engineer, if we, if we need to put a ten-foot utility easement along the fronts of all lots, we'll have that room to accommodate.
You might need to give us a seventy-five-foot radius when you start trying to put everything in there, so anyway, we're happy to work with you, just work with, work with George and-
Sure.
-traffic and we'll, we'll make it work.
All right, great, that's all I had, thank you so much.
Thanks, Mr. Orrell. All right, I'll ask if there's anyone else here to speak in favor of this application, the Village at Tate Farms subdivision? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it or have questions for it due to, due to its size? Seeing none, we will move on. Number twenty, this is a modification to a previously approved planned unit development at fifty-eight-hundred Southland Drive, this is Altapoint Health Systems. Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. Reminder for commissioners, we have eight findings of fact, and if approved, there are eight listed conditions. The applicant's in agreement with those conditions? And he is shaking his head yes. I'll ask if there's anyone else to speak in favor of this modification, application at fifty-eight-hundred Southland Drive? Anyone here to speak in opposition to it? All right, number twenty-one on the agenda, south side, this is a rezone application, south side of, is it Coiman Road? Did I say that properly? Co- Cooman?
Coeman.
What was your address number twenty again?
Well, we've already closed it, fifty-eight-hundred Southland Drive. The applicant is present, this is a rezone for those in the audience, rezoning from a residential agriculture district to an office distribution district, so from R.A. to B-five. Note for commissioners, five, or excuse me, seven findings of fact and three conditions. Yep, Mr. Nichols is, is recused from this agenda item. Go ahead, sir.
Hey there, good afternoon, my name is Judd Nash, representing Realty Link, and one thing I want to make note, we, on the rezoning, the part of the parcel was left off the rezoning, the part that is hashed right there, so we will, we'd like to see if we could just re, we'll do a separate application for that, but see if we could skip the neighborhood meeting, because it, the full parcel or the full project was presented at the neighborhood meeting.
Well, I, I don't think we can skip notifications and meetings, I'll defer to staff for any comments there.
We have an email from Mary Douglas Gibson specifically stating, we are not needing to rezone the property owned by Gregory L. Garrett. The application that was provided has been updated, it removed that.
Correct, it was, it was the wrong parcel, it was, it's supposed to be, this is the one that was, the one next door was zoned correctly, this one is not, the down below. So she mistakenly sent the wrong one. We're, we're, we're going to send a separate application for that, for that piece. The full piece was submitted though at the neighborhood meeting and presented. The full piece was submitted though at the neighborhood meeting and presented.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question to...
Go ahead. And well, let's see what Ms. Pappas has first, and then we'll go to questions from commissioners.
Okay. This application as submitted, not including the hash mark, could proceed forward, but the neighborhood meeting is a requirement to make any upzoning application, so that cannot be waived.
As I thought so. Questions from Commissioner?
Is that, um, the hash marks, is that sitting at, that's sitting at B5 at the moment, correct?
Residential agriculture, R.A. So it's an upzoning.
And then, um, a question for the applicant. As far as the wetland piece, is there, is there anything, I guess, as far as agreements or, you know, plan in the development to, I guess, preserve that wetland piece, put it in some sort of easement, or what's your plan with that wetland piece?
Yeah, currently there is no plan for that. We're just, we're just going to do a wetland delineation, but there's no plan, current plan for that right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is just a comment, this is just in general for the applicant. There's a lot of development in and around that Coolie Men Road area, especially with regards to Todd Acres area. So there's a, there's a big, there's an aspirational desire and probably a reality that at some point Coolie Men Road may be widened. So while not, not saying anything other than be aware of that, work, please, please work with the staff, I mean, to the extent, the farther you can stay away from Coolie Men Road with any fixed things, retention bonds, structures, anything short of just the driveway, the better off that your development will probably be in the long run if, if and when a project does come through there and do something to it. But just know that the, the global bigger picture all in and around Coolie Men is that there's a desire to do some more improvements to it.
Yeah, we're staying, we're, we're pretty far back already. I don't remember the feet, but we're, we're pretty, pretty far back already. Thanks, sir.
All right. So as I understand it, this application stands as is, and we will look for the secondary part of that in the future.
Correct.
You're in agreement with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this rezone at Coolman Road? Anyone here to speak in opposition of it? All right. Seeing none, we will now close the public hearing session. We will move back to number one. We'll welcome back Mr. Nichols. You'll have two recusals. I'll leave it to you, Mr. Nichols, to exit when we get there. I know it's the last one and somewhere else in the middle of the 21. Number one on the hold, on the agenda, it's a holdover, 1582 Leroy Stevens. Applicant is present or was present, eight listed conditions and was in agreement. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion for subdivision passes. Number two was withdrawn. Number three, on the new items, subdivision at 3100 Old Shell Road. The applicant is present and in agreement of the eight listed conditions.
Motion to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number four, subdivision 6467 Tillary Drive. The applicant is present and was in agreement with the nine listed conditions.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number...
I'm sorry, who was the second? Thank you, Mr. President.
We're going at a good clip, Ms. Pappas. Number five, 1065 Choctaw Street subdivision. Applicant is present and in agreement with the eight listed conditions. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve second, subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number six, 1810 Blackman Street subdivision, five listed conditions. Applicant is present and in agreement.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number seven, subdivision at 2067 Clinton Street, eight listed conditions. Applicant is present and in agreement. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number eight, subdivision at 463 Mobile Street. The applicant is present and in agreement with the 11 listed conditions. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number nine, subdivision at 2710 Thompson Drive South. The applicant is present and in agreement with the seven listed conditions.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number 10, subdivision at 2412 Wolf Ridge Road. The applicant is present, he listed conditions, and they were in agreement.
Motion to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number 11, Mr. Nichols is recused. This is 1252, we still have a quorum, 1252 Adams Street. The applicant is present and in agreement with the eight listed conditions. Entertain a motion.
I have a, a quick question.
Mr. Anderson.
So either Nick or if Traffic is here, did we want to change anything about the turning radius since that's, that's on the block system? No? Okay.
Then I would move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
I couldn't hear what you said. Can, can you put your question, man? I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear you.
In, in line with the comment that we received, the comment was asking about the turning radius there, but Traffic Engineering is not interested in that, and I try to stay on their good side, you know, so...
Yeah, I, I think, I think that'd be appropriate. It's in keeping with what we've done with other, other stuff.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number 12, 812 Wellington Street subdivision, nine conditions listed. Applicant is present and in agreement. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number 13, sorry, Mr. Nichols is recusing himself on number 13. We still had a quorum. Subdivision of 4125, 4137, 4151, 4203 Moffett Road. The applicant is present, nine listed conditions. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. We'll welcome back Mr. Nichols. We'll see him after 21. Number 14, 7650 Old Military Road subdivision, eight listed conditions. The applicant is present and in agreement.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number 15, subdivision 3254 Old Carline Street. The applicant is present and in agreement with the eight listed conditions, and we had an explanation to an audience member. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number 16, subdivision at 5575 Commerce Boulevard East. The applicant is present and nine listed conditions. They were in agreement.
Motion to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. The application is number 17 subdivision, 3254 Valley Road, 2759 Dogwood Court. The applicant is present and in agreement with the 10 listed conditions.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number 18, subdivision at 1565 Phillips Lane. The applicant is present and in agreement with the eight listed conditions.
Motion to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number 19, subdivision at 7701, 7705, 7709, 7621, and 7631 Old Government Street Road. The applicant is present, requested revision to number 10 of the conditions listed from 25-foot front yard setback to 15, and asked for number two of the conditions to be removed. Entertain a motion or open it for discussion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations, eliminating condition number two and replacing it with a note to address the, wait, no, we're, we're doing, yeah, no, that's right. Okay, yeah. Addressing the corner radius on a case-by-case basis with staff.
Second.
And waiving 6C6.
And waiving 6C6.
Everybody get that, commissioners?
Do we need to edit that further?
We have a motion on the floor. I didn't, second. We have a motion, properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number 20, this is a modification at 5800 Southlands Drive. Reminder for findings of fact, eight listed conditions. The applicant is present and in agreement of this modification of previously approved development.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations with findings of fact, A, C, E, F, and G.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number 21. Mr. Nichols is recused. We still have a quorum for the agenda item. This is a rezone, south side of Coolman Road from residential agriculture on the first application to business, or excuse me, office district, distribution district B5. The applicant is present. Reminder to commissioners for findings of fact, and then the three listed conditions of which the applicant was in agreement.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation with findings of fact, A, C, and E.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion passes. We'll welcome back Mr. Nichols for our other business item agenda. For those in the audience, this is commission filing deadlines and meeting schedule and the review of the minutes from January of 2021. If you'd like to stick around, you're welcome to. We'll take them in order of the other business items.
Mr. Chairman, I got, I got a quick question. If there's anybody here that's a part of that H, the H-RAP program with regards to the houses, I, I would ask that you stick around and, and speak with me and the other engineering staff afterwards. I want to talk to you a little bit about elevations, finished floors of houses, nothing to do with this thing, but I just, I want to make sure y'all dot some i's and cross some t's. Let us help y'all. So anyway, y'all stick around, I appreciate it.
Mr. Amburg, what is that program?
The H, I think it's H-RAP, H-RAP program.
H-RAP?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
All right. I'll ask those remaining in the audience to be patient, which this should only take a few minutes. Adoption of the 2024, 2025 Planning Commission filing deadlines and meeting schedules. Two points here for commissioners for consideration. The first is the volume of meetings. Do we remain at number, or the, the count of one per month? And then the deadlines, dates, and meeting dates. And before we get forward discussion on that among commissioners, I'll ask staff if the volume today presented any issues for having one meeting a month? I mean, we moved through it pretty quickly.
Yes, and quite frankly, as you saw, most of the applications are driven by that H-RAP program. And this does not include those that were able to be approved administratively because dedications weren't needed and things of that nature. While there may be a couple of heavy agendas in the next few months, due to that, it should be short-lived. As a matter of fact, our agenda for next one is not this heavy. It's roughly half to two-thirds.
Margaret, the reason I wanted to speak with those folks with that H-RAP program has been brought to my attention, a couple of problems with elevations on properties where in some instances they're replacing houses that are elevated, but they're not in a flood zone, but there might be localized street flooding that's not, it didn't get into the houses when they were elevated, but maybe the street flooded because it was an old infrastructure that was just there. So I, I wanted to talk, obviously, with my staff, the applicants, and then certainly the planning and zoning staff. I think on those houses, when they come in like that, especially if they're coming in for a subdivision, we maybe take one extra little, little look at what else is around it. If everything is elevated around it and, but yet, and we're not in a flood zone, I think we need to make certain that we still don't have a flooding problem, albeit not flood zone, but maybe just localized flooding because of old infrastructure. The last thing in the world that we want to do is a study, and I think y'all would want to do as contractors, is somebody build a new home, and they lower that finished floor over the existing finished floor, and you got a brand-new house that gets flooded because of something that's just overlooked because it's not a, really a thing other than, it rains a lot here in Mobile. So that's, and I want to talk to you a little bit more about how we can help y'all to make that not happen. So, anyway, that's what I wanted to mention to you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
And on the, going just to the once-a-month meeting versus the twice, still kind of the same flow. I mean, that, that's not disruptive to getting things across the finish line. I, I think, you know, the couple of holdovers we've had since we've switched over here, they've just been really, they just need to go back and get a couple of things straight. So we're really not seeing things hold, held over and then they're ready immediately and...
We have discussed with some of our, I'm going to call them our regular applicants, and we have not received any negative feedback. Most of them are pretty vocal. If they weren't happy, we would all be aware.
Got you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I, I enjoy the, the new format, so I would move that we adopt the proposed filing deadline and meeting date schedule as proposed by staff.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? The meeting and deadline schedule for the remaining of 2024 and through September 18th of 2025 is approved. Next item of business minutes from January 7th of 2021 and January 21 of 2021. Each of the commissioners received these. I'll see if there's any questions regarding those minutes from commissioners, and we will combine them for a single approval. Does anybody have any questions on the minutes? Entertain a motion to approve the minutes from 20, January of 2021.
Motion to approve.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor? The motion for the minute approval passes. Reminder to Ms. Denson, you and I will need to sign these before you scoot out. That concludes the other business items. I will ask Ms. Pappas, your, your, this is, next month is your final meeting, correct? No?
This is my last meeting with the Planning Commission. I am retiring next month, and due to some outstanding coordination of surgery in the family, I will not be here for the next meeting. So this is my last meeting. I did want to voice my appreciation to the Planning Commission for all of the work and that you put in and for working with an incredible staff. I will say I'm looking for... I will say I'm looking forward to retirement, but quite frankly, I have really enjoyed working with the commission and the board these past few years. Thank you for your patience with me.
Thank you, ma'am.
On behalf of the planning commission, this year and for the last twenty years, we give a heartfelt thanks for your dedication of service to the city of Mobile and the planning department. Fantastic, fantastic job, and enjoy. At this time, we'll go ahead and adjourn in those.